Next, we have the approval of the February 12th, 2019 minutes.
Moved to approve the minutes of February 12th, 2019. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of February 12th, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next, we have authorization to pay bills. Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move we pay bills in the amount of $778,735.27.
Second.
Moved and seconded to pay bills in the amount of $778,735.27. Are there any questions on the bills tonight?
I guess on page two. The interesting guy that was here, is that who that is? That's $5,000 from Clintonville? On page two.
Okay, just a minute, I'm getting there, Tom. Which category is that under, Tom?
I don't know.
Intradine, under capital maintenance.
I guess so.
No, that's to a company, Tom, that takes care of our -- we've got to archive all of our emails that we get, City Hall, even if they're junk. We have to keep track of them for X number of years. And also, all any Facebook posts, anything like that, all has got to be kept for a long period of time. And that's to the company that provides that service to the city.
How long a period does that go for, then?
Well, this would be, I think, a year, because I think they just had to update the server and put in a new thing that automatically takes care of it for us.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions on the bills, please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried. Next, we have public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council on anything? If not, we'll move right along to standing and special committees. First of all, Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Board of Public Works met on Monday, March 4th, 2019, 4:30. First item was wastewater treatment plan update. There are no questions or concerns on the monthly report. The next item was discuss and possibly act on request to remove the traffic islands from Cedarhurst Drive. A resident requested that the board reconsider removing the five traffic islands on Cedarhurst. The board discussed the history of these islands in that they were installed to calm traffic due to residents complaining of fast speeds. Motion made and seconded not to remove the traffic islands. Motion carried unanimously. The next item was to authorize the Director of Public Services to approve change orders for the wastewater treatment plant digester project to total more, no more than $50,000. Mr. Hirth requested that the board consider authorizing the Director of Public Services authority to approve change orders totaling no more than $50,000 for the upcoming digester project. The $50,000 is approximately one quarter of the contingency budget set for this project. Motion made and seconded to recommend the council to authorize the Director of Public Services to approve change orders for no more than $50,000. Motion carried. That will be brought to council tonight. The next item was consider an action for an ordinance amending heavy traffic routes. A recent review of heavy traffic routes listed in the city's municipal code found that the section of Beckett Road from Mill Street to Division Street was not included. This section of road supplies semi-deliveries to businesses in the Beckett Industrial Park as well as Tyson Foods. Motion made and seconded to recommend the council approve an ordinance to reclassify Beckett Road from Mill to Pershing Drive a heavy traffic route. Motion carried unanimously. That will be brought to council tonight. The next item. Rick Hotenstein has completed 24 years of service within the city on February 26th. Other members, Chairman Barrington suggested the idea from a resident to use remaining DNR grant funds for possible shade coverage over the picnic tables at St. John's Park. This will be moved to Parks and Rec Committee for discussion. That being no further business, motion made and seconded to adjourn. I make a motion to authorize the Director of Public Works to approve change orders for the wastewater treatment plant digester project to total no more than $50,000.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize the Director of Public Services to approve change orders for the WWTP digester project to a total of no more than $50,000. Is there any discussion on that item?
This would keep the project going without a lot of major delays.
Right. Tom?
Was that guy the low bidder, too?
What?
That he needed change orders? If you're the low bidder, if you get a lot of change orders, then you could be the low bidder.
You can run into a lot of change orders with a high bidder, believe me, from the construction projects I've seen. No, these are, the engineers have got the plans pretty well set, but, Tom, occasionally we run into some situations, and you've seen it yourself, where soil conditions may be something that we aren't aware of. It could be a variety of reasons why you need a change order, or all of a sudden they find out that there's a new material come out that might work better, last longer, something like that, and they want to substitute it. That we give, what we do if we pass this, that's going to be up to Chad's discretion. If he feels those change orders are necessary, he'll approve them. But this way, we're not going to delay the project by having to wait for a committee meeting and then a city council meeting to approve it. Otherwise, we're going to have 30 construction guys sitting down there for two weeks doing nothing. Okay? Okay, please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
Okay, I make a motion to change the heavy traffic route on Beckett Road between Mill Street and Division Street. This was somehow neglected, and it is a heavy traffic route.
Second.
Moved and seconded to amend Chapter 7, the Municipal Code, Section 7.051H, to add Beckett Road from Mill Street to Pershing Road to the heavy-duty traffic routes to the city. Is there any question on that item? Tom?
The reason there, you know, from VFW to the east, that was a dead, there wasn't a road. That was dead end there by the VFW.
Years and years ago, yeah.
I've been wrong too long. Okay.
You said it.
That's what happened, I guess we never thought about it.
Okay.
Got my sound?
Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
And that is all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Next, we move to Finance and Personnel, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, March 6th, at 4:30 PM in the council chambers. At the Finance and Personnel Committee last month, a resident was present who spoke against the city's denial of his claim. The committee asked for additional information regarding the situation. Public Services Director, Chad Hirth, was present and summarized his opinion regarding the situation. The city insurance carrier recommends denial of the claim. Fachee motion and seconded by Barrington to deny the claim. The motion carried three to zero with O'Connell and Steinhorst voting no. Ordinances were then reviewed, making changes to the clerk, treasurer, assessor, inspector, finance director, and city administrators' positions, and these will be recommended to council for passage later tonight. The revised job description for the city administrator and a new revised job description for the finance director positions were reviewed and will also be submitted tonight for approval by the council. Those motions carried five to zero. The revised resolution to assign fund balance was reviewed. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Fachee to recommend the city council the revised resolution to assign fund balance. Motion carried five to zero. The finance director's reports were reviewed and approved. The city administrator's report was discussed. The April Finance and Personnel Committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 3rd, at 4:30 PM. There was no public comment or further business, and the meeting adjourned at 5:17 PM. Then, I move we approve the charter ordinances for the offices of city clerk, treasurer, assessor, inspector, finance director, and the change to the city administrators' ordinance also be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve all of the charter ordinance proposals coming from the Finance Committee meeting. Are there any questions or comments on those? If not, please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. I move that we approve the revised job description for the city administrator and for the finance director.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the revised job descriptions for the city administrator and finance director. Are there any question or comments on that item? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
And I move that we approve the resolution assigning fund balance.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the revised resolution assigning fund balances. Any comment or question on that? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
I move we approve the license list for March as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the license list as presented. Are there any comments or questions on the license list? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I move we authorize the city administrator and city attorney to transfer the food pantry, leased premises, pantry funds, and other pantry assets to St. Joe's Residence/Washington Center.
Moved and seconded to authorize the city administrator and city attorney to transfer the food pantry, leased premises, pantry funds, and other pantry assets to St. Joseph's Residence/Washington Center. Are there any question on that item? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
That's all for finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Next, we move to Park and Recreation, Mr. Way.
I have an easy job tonight, Your Honor, with no meeting in March. I have no report.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, then we move on to Planning Commission, Mr. Steinhorst.
My job is not quite as easy. Funding Commission met on February 28th, called order by Chairman Hanlon at 5:00 PM. Agenda was adopted, roll call was taken, and the minutes of the January 24th, 2019 Planning Commission minutes were approved. First item on the agenda was the discussion of 17.11-3/8 of the zoning code regarding maximum lot coverage in new subdivisions and action if any. Mr. Hanlon reviewed the zoning code, explaining the proposed Romanesco subdivision was the first one falling under the new regulations for maximum coverage on a lot. Maximum coverage includes the dwelling, attached and detached garages, storage buildings, patios, decks, driveways, walkways, and any other hard surface. Two illustrations of lot coverage were presented to the members to help understand the requirements of the ordinance. The first illustration showed an 1,800-square-foot, single-family dwelling with an attached garage, patio, sidewalk, and driveway, and this building only covered 28 percent of the lot. The second illustration, however, showed a 1,472-square-foot duplex with attached garages, patios, sidewalks, and driveways, and this building covered 45 percent of the lot. Per the current ordinance, no residential parcel in a new subdivision may have more than 35 percent coverage. Romanesco Developments expressed interest in creating duplexes in the proposed subdivision, and the current 35 percent regulation would make that impossible based on the minimum lot size. Lot sizes would have to be increased to a minimum of 16,000 square feet to accommodate the duplex in the illustration, which would reduce the number of buildable lots from 35 to 27. Mr. Hanlon then suggested that the members consider amending the ordinance to allow R1, Residential 1, single-family lots, allow a maximum coverage of 40 percent, and all other residential zoning be allowed maximum coverage of 60 percent. Motion was made and seconded to recommend the maximum coverage of 40 percent for R1 single-family and the maximum coverage of 60 percent for all other residential zoning, and that motion was carried five to zero. Members reviewed the updated zoning map that showed the changes along West Wolf River Avenue that were discussed at the previous meeting, however, no action was taken. In other matters, Mr. Hanlon told the members about the upcoming codification process that will take place this year. After the initial review by mini-code, each committee will need to review the ordinances that apply to them and recommend any changes or corrections. And our next meeting will be on March 28th, 2019, at 5:00 PM. Meeting adjourned at 5:32 PM. And that is all I have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Steinhorst. That was enough for one night, I think.
I think so.
Okay, next, we move on to Economic Development Committee, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, February 26th, at 4:30 PM in the city council chambers. The January 29th minutes were approved. Bill Zeinerd from the firm My Marketing Director addressed the committee. The city has had eight videos running on Facebook and YouTube. Bill reported that there had been over 750,000 impressions and over 400,000 views of the videos. It was agreed that the videos advocate for New London very well. The committee wants to continue this promotional effort at the same level and keep future digital marketing efforts in mind. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Fachee to recommend the city council that we continue with our digital marketing efforts starting March 1st and go through December 31st at a cost of $850 a month for a total contract cost of $8,500. This contract will be with the firm My Marketing Director. The motion passed unanimously. Randy Statmiller from Statmiller &amp; Associates was not available for the meeting. Randy is planning on being present at the March 26th meeting to update the committee and present several conceptual plans for the development of the city riverfront property. Trevor Frank from SEH may also be available. Kent reviewed his recent activities. The committee reviewed and commented on the goals for 2019. The committee agreed that the amended goals were appropriate. The next committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 26th, at 4:30 PM. Randy Statmiller will be present to discuss his proposed development alternatives for the downtown riverfront property. It was also suggested to extend an invitation to meet with the committee to Alex LaRue, who has recently opened a new business in the city. There was no public comment, and the meeting adjourned at 5:37 PM. Then, I'd like to make a motion, soon as I find it, to approve contract with My Marketing Director for Digital Marketing from March 1st through December 31st at a cost of $8,500.
Moved and seconded to approve the contract with My Marketing Director for Digital Marketing from March 1st through December 31st, 2019, at a cost of $8,500. Are there any questions or comments on that item? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
And that's all I have for tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Okay, next, you've got the minutes and reports from the Housing Authority, Library Museum, Police and Fire Commission, Utility Commission, Cemetery Superintendent, and Building Inspector. Are there any questions or comments on those items? Okay, next, we'll go to reports of officers. I'm first up, and I know you've all been waiting for this with spring arriving. I have a resolution supporting International Migratory Bird Day. Whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our communities, and whereas many citizens recognize and welcome migratory songbirds, the symbolic harbingers of spring. Excuse me. Whereas these migrant species also play an important economic role in our community, controlling insect pests and generating millions in recreational dollars statewide. And whereas microdory birds in their habitats are declining throughout the Americas, facing a growing number of threats on their migration routes in both their summer and winter homes. And whereas public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservation, and whereas citizens enthusiastic about birds, informed about the threats they face, and empowered to help address those threats can directly contribute to maintaining healthy bird populations. And whereas since 1993, International Migratory Bird Day has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and the Southern U.S. And whereas hundreds of thousands of people will observe Migratory Bird Day gathered in town squares, community centers, schools, parks, nature centers, and wildlife refuges to learn about the birds, take action to conserve them, and simply have fun. Whereas the IMBD officially is held each year on the second Saturday of May, its observance is not limited to a single day, and planners are encouraged to schedule activities on the dates best suited to the presence of both migrants and celebrants. Whereas IMBD is not only a day to foster appreciation for wild birds and to celebrate and support migratory bird conservation, but also calls to action. Therefore, I, as Mayor of the City of New London, do hereby proclaim Saturday, March 16th, as International Migratory Bird Day in the City of New London, and urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in New London and the world at large. Thank you. As an additional piece of information, you may have heard on the news today that the state of Wisconsin has decided to put a juvenile detention facility in the site out just south of New London. I got the call about 15 minutes before it was publicly announced down in Madison, so we did have advanced warning. Now, we had several questions, Kent and I did, we were wondering about whatever, and the reason I was a little late getting in here at 6:30 tonight was I got a call from the gal down in Madison who had some answers for me, which is good. First of all, they're looking at working with governments in the area to make this a success and get our input, so forth like that on it, but they're looking at a facility that's going to house between 30 and 35 beds. Okay? The staffing, they're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 people. This would, of course, involve some security people, but mostly teachers, social workers, mental health people to work with these young people. They're going to be working with Sewer &amp; Water, hopefully working with the City of New London. She said the design process is long and drawn out, and I had asked for a timeline, and she said, "Well, we're in the early design stages right now. Then we've got to go through getting the proper zoning, so forth like that. We've got several prototypes we're looking at, but the engineers and architects are really looking at designing this specific facility." And when she said the design process is long and drawn out, she said, "And we're hoping to be out to bid by early fall." To me, that's not a real long design process. But anyway, that's all the information we have. Personally, I think it's a real positive for the area. It's about the same as getting a new small business into town. You've got people employed, you've got people that are going to want to shop, live here, become part of the community, go to church here, and own homes here. So I think it's a real positive for the entire area. Okay? Any questions on that?
This will be in the town of Hortonia then, correct?
Yes, right, the property that they're looking at right now is in the town of Hortonia. Tom?
What do we do with the sewer? You're supposed to be in the city to hook onto the sewer. We're going to have them pay for it or something?
If they want to hook up the city and sewer, they would have to annex to the city, Tom.
Can we annex them that far out?
Yes.
We can annex anything you want.
We have Sewer &amp; Water at, I believe, the corner of Beckett and Mill Street right now, or Highway 15. No, that's Mill Street there. But we've got Sewer &amp; Water out that far, and it would, you know, it's a ways to go out to that facility, but yes, it can be done.
It wouldn't be a lot of money for that.
Looking forward to working with them. Rob?
Yeah, it's kind of early to ask this, but didn't mention anything about, is it a fixed size, or do they look at expansion in the future?
No, they want to go with, they're looking at basically, I think, five facilities around the state. The two they announced today is one in Milwaukee and the one here. And these two are going to be state-run. The other one are going to be located, and they will be county one, but they want to keep them small. They said that's the ideal size facility, is 30 to 35. And she said they get too big, you run into problems. It's very much like a high school. Smaller school, you know, up to a point, are better than humongous schools, generally speaking, so. Tom?
Do you know if they got an option on land already?
They own the land.
State owns them?
Yep.
Yep, they bought it. They've had that for a while, haven't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All DOT land.
It was originally bought for the rural.
Who did buy it?
I'm assuming the DOT would turn it over to the Department of Corrections. Yeah.
I think so.
Oh.
Will you finish?
Any other questions on that? Okay, we do need to approve the international, the resolution supporting Migratory Bird Day.
Who do we support that?
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution supporting Migratory Bird Day. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next, we'll move to City Administrator, Mr. Hager.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's obviously several big activities going on in the neighborhood, and I'd like to, again, emphasize that all those processes are open to the public. We try to inform the public as best we can, the Romanesco proposal for the subdivision with the Planning Commission, the riverfront development, all of those. Development, all of those proposals are open for public inspection. We try to get stuff, as much stuff as we can posted on our internet site, but if you'd like to talk about specifics, don't hesitate to give me a call, and we'll get you fully informed. And it's anxious, will be same way with the proposal for the juvenile detention facility, where we, we don't have anything in this building or in this organization that is not public record, with very few exceptions, and those are active police investigations and juvenile court situations. Otherwise, you can look at whatever you want to look at that we've got. So don't ever hesitate to do that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Kent. Next, we move City Clerk, Jackie.
Thank you, Your Honor. The April second election ballots are available at City Hall. If you would like to vote in person, absentee, from eight AM until four thirty PM, Monday through Friday, at the clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we go to our Utility Manager, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Your Honor. With the warming weather, we've been getting, we've had a couple water main breaks. We had one on East Washington Street and a second one on Montgomery Street. We also had two frozen water service laterals, one on Pershing and one on Bruce Street. All the digs have been taken care of at this point. To make sure that my electric department stays busy, we've had a regulator failure at our north substation that's in process to be at that repaired and taken care of. Our crews continue to tree trim, and more importantly, we've been working very heavily on our AMI meter conversion. We're down to approximately sixteen hundred meters in the system, eight hundred water and eight hundred electric. We converted to get that conversion completed. We hope to have that very close to being done by year end. As spring goes on and this nice thawing weather's coming, you will notice in town in the next few days, lots of water on the roads. Some will be because they can't get the catch basins, and it's also possibly there might be a broken water main or a service rattle leak. So if you do see big puddles of water somewhere, call, let us check it to make sure it's just thawing and not a break that's hidden. We need to want to address those as quickly as we can, because I believe we'll see lots of water in the next week, so that's what I have, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Next, City Attorney, Mr. Lwatters.
I have nothing specific, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. And now, Director Public Services, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, Steve gave the, a really good segue about catch basins in the streets. The only thing I got to report on tonight was that on our Public Works street side, we're actively going around checking those catch basins. We do have some problem catch basins around that are shallow, that are frozen, so we're addressing those, you know, the problem areas, but we know there's going to be a lot of melting, and we, the last few days, we've been going around trying to clean out those catch bases as best we can to try to anticipate the melting snow and the rain that's coming. But like Steve said, if you do see a problem area, we can't, we don't have staff that's in every single corner of the, the city at every single moment. So if you do see a problem area, don't be afraid to give the Public Works Department, the Public Works Office a call. Let us know, bring that to our attention. We can go out there and check it out, you know, like Steve was talking about, maybe it's a water main break, maybe it's just a catch basin that we need to clean out, but don't be afraid to call us in the Public Works Office, ninety-two, eight-five-zero-three on that, and let us know. But we've been actively going around trying to keep those open as best we can with the upcoming melting going on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, our Police Chief, Mr. Schleter.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four anniversaries, Ryan Denew, eleven years, Brody Erickson, four years, Mike Harlow, thirteen years, and Chase Schrader, eight years. And then I also just want to talk about, I've been getting a lot of concerned citizens talking about the stop sign up by Marley's Restaurant, and I wanted to make sure to warn everyone that that has now changed, so as you're heading westbound on Beacon and turning north onto Pearl Street, that you do have to stop for that stop sign. Now, they put a couple of flags out and stuff. The Police Department, we've done some advertising on Facebook, we talked to the Packer County Post to make sure to get the word out there. We've been making traffic stops. We've only given warnings up to this point, but as time goes on, we'll eventually start moving those warnings over to tickets if people aren't stopping for them. We understand and know that people have been driving that route for numerous years, including myself, and sometimes you don't look at the stop sign because you still assume that's right turn, no stop, but it is a complete stop now that you must make. This was done for safety reasons. I talked to the Packer County Highway Department, they're the ones that made the change, and it had to deal with signage and just making it a safer route for everybody, especially people from out of town that didn't know that you didn't have to stop for that stop sign there if you're making a right-hand turn. So we're going to keep working with the community and stuff like that, but just want to remind people to stop for that stop sign now. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get any comments on Facebook, Jeff?
We have received a few comments. I received a couple of emails today, was concerned citizens, and I've replied back to them, informing them kind of the background on the whole situation.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we go to our Fire Chief, Mr. Wilfer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have three service anniversaries I'd like to announce. Mark Honchki, thirty-five years, Nicholas Wickman, seven years, and Mark Wilfer, thirty-five years. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business to come before the council tonight?
Moved to adjourn? Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.